Welcome, everyone. It's 6:30 PM and this is the MSAD-15 June 14 School Board Meeting. This is the one meeting a year that I chair for about eight minutes until you elect the School Board Chair. So I'll now call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There are no upcoming meetings scheduled, but later in the agenda that will be addressed for our suburb meetings. Number four, to take, to consider action relative to additions or adjustments to the agenda.
None?
Yes.
Did you ask for adjustments?
Yes, adjustments.
I'd like to make an addition to the agenda.
Sure.
Okay, and that has to do with absenteeism?
Mm-hmm.
And if we, the school board could get some kind of report that describes what are some of the cases for, what are the cases for absenteeism, so that we can take a look at that. See, this, so we're working to get that fixed.
Sure. We can, we can add that as an agenda item.
I was.
Yes. To ask for, pardon me?
I don't know.
If it's okay with everyone, I can address that during the superintendent's report.
Sure.
My question? You, my question you mean?
Yes. To ask for comments from the audience?
That's you.
How about that pizza, girl?
I don't have pizza.
To take action relative to accepting as printed the minutes of the June 7, 2023 regular business meeting. I take it you all received the minutes?
I move we do accept those minutes as printed from the June 7 regular business meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
No discussion?
Oh, any discussion on the minutes?
No, I read them again for this morning.
Okay. All right.
I abstained. I wasn't here.
Okay. Those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Yeah.
Opposed? It carries.
Three abstentions.
Three abstentions. I am a bit embarrassed. I was student council president in high school and I had Robert's Rules of Order memorized, but it's failing me this evening. I do have my notes though. For new business, to elect a School Board Chair. So I declare nominations for the position of School Board Chair open. Please raise your hand of a nomination for a School Board. Misty?
I like, I nominate Sam Fischler.
Second.
I second it.
Second? All right. Are there any other nominations?
Jason, you want to be nominated?
No, thank you. I appreciate that.
You've been working hard. I thought maybe you would, you would go that way.
Yep.
I move to close nominations.
Thank you. All those, all those in favor of closing nominations? The yays carry. So.
Tim, you accepted.
Could we have a second?
A second?
Yep.
Close nominations, now we.
Yep, now we would vote. Those who are in favor of Sam Feifel for a School Board Chair, please raise your hand.
Should we have discussion?
Theoretically, we would have discussion.
Any discussion?
Great idea.
He's inexperienced. I'll do it.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Sam Feifel for a School Board Chair? Okay, by unanimous acclaim, Sam Feifel has been elected School Board Chair.
Congratulations.
And he now has the gavel.
Thank you so much, Craig. I appreciate everybody's continuing faith in my abilities to chair meetings and to serve the public. So I appreciate the opportunity and look forward to working in the role again. So at this point, I would hear nominations for the School Board Vice Chair. Go ahead, Mrs. Stewart.
I would like to nominate Penny Collins.
Second.
All right. Nomination for Laura, second from Gary. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? All right. Seeing none. Any discussion? Penny?
Entering with the same previous question, Jason, you're good.
Excuse me?
You're good?
Her voice is very soft and a lot of times she has it into her mouth and it's very difficult to hear.
You can talk to me directly.
I do apologize that I had bring that up, but I can't hear what you said.
Absolutely teasing Jason about his interest in the position before accepting the nomination.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
That would be happy to.
All right. Any more discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? All right. Congratulations, Penny. You are now the School Board Vice Chair with all the powers and duties vested in you.
Congrats, Penny. Congratulations.
Good reading.
Okay. With that done, let's move on with the rest of the business of the meeting. We do need to compute the results of the ballot validation referendum held yesterday as certified by the town managers of Gray and New Gloucester. I think I need someone to move that all of this stuff happens.
Okay. I move, wait, starting it, sorry.
I move that it be voted.
I move that it be voted, that the computation and declaration of votes dated June 13, 2023, and attached here to be approved, that the computation and declaration of votes be entered upon the records of main school administration district number 15, that the foregoing computation and declaration shall be signed by a majority of the School Board, and that these signatures may be made electronically by execution of counterparts or in person at the convenience of the members of the School Board.
Second.
Thank you. Jason, are there any discussion? Any concerns that the votes are not counted correctly or anything like that?
Do we have the official count? Is that in one of the articles here? The numbers themselves?
Uh.
Should that be on the record?
It's on the piece of paper that we have to sign and we can put, enter that into the record. My understanding was that it was... 925 yes and 716 no. All right. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? None. All right, Maggie, why don't we do the signing right now? Cole is not here, but we only need a majority, so I think we can just sign all these and then give him an opportunity to come sign at the town, at the district office if he wants.
Should I have the assessment signed now too?
Um, oh, why don't we, okay, there's two pieces of thing we got to sign? Yeah, so let's do the assessment thing too. So, can you move?
I move that the warrant for assessment of tax in the assessment schedule and notice of installments for each member municipality prepared by the treasurer for fiscal year 2023, 2024 be approved and be issued in form presented to this meeting, and that the treasurer be authorized and directed to deliver to each member municipality its warrant for assessment of tax in its assessment schedule and notice of installments.
Second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion on that? All right. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? All right, great. Not a special one, that's exciting. It has to be in black pen.
Oh, it does?
Yeah. Just sign, so I have to sign both of these?
Yes.
Today's date is the 15th, 14th.
14th, Flag Day.
Yep.
Just need to go around with people.
Thank you.
All right, these are free. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Now, how many are three on this?
Hmm, I don't know.
Oh, because you didn't sign it.
Okay, now it's not.
There you go.
He's the treasurer, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I think I'll get off of that.
This is.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, sir.
Do you have the majority, I see you don't need my mic?
Um, well, we typically have the whole board sign.
I do?
We usually have the board, the whole board sign.
Well, the town of Gray voted me down, so out of respect to them, I won, I signed.
Okay.
I had no problem with the count, I just signed.
Fran? Fran, am I, am I to understand that you are objecting to the signing of our request for revenues from the town of Gray and New Gloucester?
No. What I, what I said was, if you have your majority, you don't need my signature. And so I just assumed not sign it if I don't have to.
But you're.
But you said, but you needed the majority and you have the majority, the board that signed it.
That's true. The legal requirement is that a majority of the board sign it, but if you are here and choose not to sign it, I think most people would interpret that as an objection to the signature.
Again, the town of Gray since voting it down.
Do you feel as though in some way this was done illegally?
So, no.
The town of Gray didn't vote anything down. The town of Gray is part of the constituency of the MSAD-15 School Board.
Right.
There is no, Gray approves and New Gloucester approves, they just happen to hold the election on our behalf.
No, it's symbolic. Excuse me, it's just symbolic, that's all.
So you believe that we do not deserve the revenues that the people of MSAD-15 have?
You put words in my mouth, this is a symbolic situation only. And you're not gonna brow me and decide in that paper if I don't have to.
All right, I just want to know if you think we've done something incorrect.
No, did I say any of that? I'm so sorry, I'm not, don't put words in my mouth.
I'm asking a question.
Okay.
Maggie, you have everything you need?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. All right. Let's move into the next piece of new business, which is setting dates for summer School Board meetings. Craig and Penny and I will work on a full calendar for the upcoming school year, which we generally approve in the fall, but in the meantime, it's usually good to get a couple of meetings on the summer calendar because we might need to hire teachers or in some other way approve expenditures or whatever it happens to be. If it turns out that we don't need them, we can always decide not to hold them. Also, I would like to do our annual board orientation in August, which is when we generally do that. You know, it's a little bit different every year with three new board members this year. I think it would probably be prudent to just do a refresher orientation on the laws and powers of the School Board and just make sure that we're all on the same page entering the new school year. So I was thinking a business meeting in July and an orientation meeting in August. In general, we try to keep things on Wednesdays because it's nice and consistent and people can kind of just plan their lives around that. For the new board members, it's tradition that we have our, and it's actually in our bylaws, that we have our business meeting on the first Wednesday of the month, and we traditionally have a workshop or a second business meeting on the third Wednesday of the month. And then we try to hold all of our committee meetings on those first and third Wednesdays, but there's some often too many committees, so we'll also have one on the second and fourth to fill in. So keeping with that and figuring that people do not want to meet on July 5th because that's a really big, you know, vacation week, I was thinking we could schedule a business meeting for July 19th, which would be kind of a clearinghouse meeting, maybe do it at 5:30 instead of 6:30, because we won't have a committee meeting ahead of time. Any objections to July 19th?
No.
All right. And then I was thinking we would have our board orientation on August 9th. Again, I know that's not the first Wednesday, but I've found the last week of July and the first week of August are the very best weeks of the summer, and so thought maybe I would avoid them. I don't have a passion about it, but I was thinking August 9th would be our board orientation and we can have a little chat about this. I know Misty has advocated for us to do some team book building, which I don't think is a bad idea, especially with a few new members, and would be good to do a little get to know you. So Misty has generously offered the Coolidge Family Barn as a gathering spot. It would have to be a public meeting, so you know, obviously the public would have to be, I'm assuming you hold big weddings there, so I'm assuming you have capacity for the public should they want to come.
Two other people, bring them on.
All right. Considering how much public we have come. All right. So, you know, just gotta make sure. So I was thinking, again, something like 5:30 on August 9th, we could do one hour of orientation and then one hour of, you know, really what I would like to do is just talk a little bit about our backgrounds, about the skills that we bring to the board, and talk about how we might deploy those skills in our committee work, and then look at the strategic plan and how we might align our committee agendas with what we'd like to accomplish as a board alongside the strategic plan. So really, you know, I promise no trust falls or anything like that, but I might ask you to tell me what your favorite bird is or something that illuminates something about your personality and lets us know about some skills and talents that we don't know about. So any objections to August 9th for that meeting?
No.
All right, great. And then the second thing on meetings, this doesn't necessarily apply to everybody, but I want to give the opportunity to everybody, which is looking at where we are with our capital planning, the bond discussions that we've had. I think we are at a point where we need some more concentrated work to try to get some things into a final form that we can bring back in front of the public. We have data from the public survey, we have more than 100 responses to that, we have data from the boosters talking about what they would like to see in a snack shack and bathrooms. Some really good points were brought up there, such as the boosters really don't want to be in charge of cleaning the bathrooms, which may very well be fair. So you have to, you know, think about things like staffing and all that kind of stuff. So I am not necessarily asking for dates, but I'm going to put this in Craig's hands. Craig is going to organize a bond committee that's going to be made up of board members, administrators, and community members to try to, you know, figure out what we don't know yet, what other data do we need, what other pieces of input do we require, going through the survey data a little bit, and trying to, you know, get us to something that, you know, may or may not be ready for the, you know, vote, but at least might be ready for, you know, a intense scrutiny, you know, where we know what we're talking about, we're ready to bring in the engineers to answer questions, that kind of thing. I think we're sort of still not sure how big or how small that's, so you know, trying to get to a point where like, this is the plan that we feel confident and, you know, this is our plan for our capital facilities. So just show of hands, who would like to be involved in that committee? I know we've asked this before, but just people that want to be in that committee? All right, so Craig, we've got these four, Penny and Cher, everybody wants to be in the committee, all right.
Yeah.
Fred, Jim don't want to be at any part of it.
So Craig is going to, you know, invite some people, it's, these, these might not be Wednesday meetings, these might be Tuesday meetings, it's going to depend on the community members and that kind of thing, but I think, good, we have that kind of interest and, you know, it may be something where we want to do three or four meetings over the course of the summer so that when we get back in the fall, there's something for the School Board to really consider and for the community to consider. So any objections to that? Sounds like everybody's on board for that. Okay. Great.
Sam?
Yeah?
Did you give a venue for the 19th, the meeting on the 19th?
The 19th, we'll have to figure that out. It'll either be the meeting house or here.
Okay.
That'd be just a normal business meeting.
We have, we have the town office security.
Okay, so it'll be here.
Yeah, sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't in the summer, but we get it.
So I'll take the question marks off.
Great. Okay, so to recap, July 19th, 5:30 here, August 9th, 5:30 at the Coolidge Family Farm in New Gloucester, and three to four bond committee meetings, location and time to be determined. Does anybody feel we need other meetings over the summer?
Just a question, saying, do we need to reconstitute finance? Or can that wait till September?
Um, I haven't been asked to have a finance committee meeting over, do we need a finance committee meeting over the summer?
Not that we know of. If we feel we need one, we could have it an hour before the August meeting or an hour before the July meeting.
So you could vote on that and elect a chair at that meeting, probably dealing with whatever it is you're doing.
What I'd like to do is form the committees after our little orientation. If we need one, I can form a committee and, you know, we can elect a chair there.
This the only one that kind of does business or something?
Yeah, sometimes it does need, like, if we have to issue a lease or, you know, something like that. I'll, I'll get to, Craig and I will get together with Diane and see if she sees anything. Good point, though. All right. Any other calendar related items? Yes, Penny?
Will we do the walking tour of the schools again?
Yes, 100%. Usually we do that like in the fall when the school's back in session. So that we don't, you know, it's a little unfair to get it in the summer when the janitors have everything looking awesome. You want to see how the buildings are being used. But yeah, we will absolutely schedule, again, that's a public tour that we do, generally we do it like third week of September, first week of October, or some kind of, something like that. Generally, we do it like on a Saturday morning because we all get on the bus and we go to each building and it can take, you know, I think last time it took like five hours, so.
No, it's a big team.
Yeah. And the public is always invited, anytime there's more than three, three or more of us in a room, the public's invited, so if you want to ride on a bus this fall, be on the lookout. Okay. Thank you, Penny, but that's a good question. Any other calendar items? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go into old business, and this is a continuation of the NEASK discussion that we had at our last meeting. For those new board members, I'm sorry, I moved this for no reason. For those new board members, at our last meeting, we heard from Jade Castello, our assistant principal, and Sadie Greilish, our principal at the high school, about, so the NEASK, the new, we hate acronyms, but I am not 100% sure, I'm not sure, I know NEASK stands for New England Association of School.
And Colleges.
Schools and Colleges.
No.
They are our accrediting body for the high school at the moment, and we are due to have them come back in for another 10-year accreditation cycle, and so this is the opportunity to decide whether we want to stay with NEASK or whether we would like to look at a different accrediting body. And at the last meeting, Jade and Sadie shared some reasons why we might want to look at a different accrediting body, and we were asked to kind of ponder those, and now Jade is back to help us further that discussion and to provide more feedback to administration on our thoughts. So Jade, do you want to start? Is there new questions that you want the answer to, or do you want me to just open this up to discussion now that people have had a week to think about it?
I think I'm just prepared to any, answer any questions that anyone has about the presentation or about the materials that we provided, and if I may, Sam, I also just want to publicly thank members of the public listening in, members of the board who ratified and approved our school budget. As a community member, a parent, and as school leader, the amount of tireless dedication of all of the teachers and all of the staff at this time of year is, it's, I can't put a dollar amount on it, but we really appreciate the support from the towns and the support from the board members, so just wanted to publicly say that, and then I would take any questions or thoughts that folks have about what Sadie and I shared about NEASK.
All right, great. Why don't we just open that to discussion? I know that, you know, people who were not here last week might be at a loss, you know, but feel free, open discussion, just raise your hand to be recognized. Misty?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough. There were, I learned a lot. I knew much about accreditation, so it was good to hear your points and feedback on all the research that you guys did and brought forward to us. And looking over all of the notes after the meeting, honestly, I respect your thoughts and where you think we should go with this. This is what you guys do for a living, this is your career, and I, I'm interested to know what accreditation you would recommend that we go with, where do you ladies stand or where does the administration stand on where they would like to see us go, I guess is my big question.
I think that, you know, it's hard to speak, Sadie lost a family member this week, which is why she isn't here, so it's hard to speak for both of our administrative teams, but I think we would love the support in looking at another organization that does similar work, but that in our opinion does it in a more, has sort of a more of a coaching model, gives schools a little bit more flexibility about how they work through school change efforts, and again, we're just concerned about the rigidity and the variance in quality of, of the NEASK feedback, so I think if the board felt comfortable allowing us to explore either Great Schools Partnership or the Quality Schools Review, that we would, you know, we would take that feedback and, and really do some research and some outreach to one of those organizations and then make a proposal to the board about which we'd prefer to go with.
Those are the two that you're narrowing it on?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yep.
Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you for that. As a former high school teacher, having lived through accreditation, I'm glad you're looking for something else that's not quite as unbending. I'm glad you're looking for something else that's not quite as unbending because today we need more flexibility. And I think you're wise in searching around and seeing what else is available. And thank you for doing that Jade, and I'm sure your staff will appreciate it too.
And I will say on behalf of the staff, a lot of them, especially our teacher leaders, know that we're having these conversations, but they have been, you know, today, when everyone had time to work in their classrooms, we had just waved goodbye to five hundred young people. They still came together and worked through the process of voting on core values that NEASK has asked us to do, had some thoughts about that process, so they are, you know, they are still committed to making that work if that's what we need to do. But I think, I do think the faculty would appreciate us exploring something else that feels more feasible and relatable to them.
It's not that long ago, even though I retired in oh seven, I remember what it was like and the amount of work that we had to do to get everything ready. Thank you Jade.
Thanks Laura.
Go ahead Penny.
Did we get confirmation around making a decision to, to not pursue reaccreditation? Allows us to still be considered accredited till the expiration date of our current window?
Correct, so are, we've been in some conversations with NEASK about a possible extension, mostly because of the conversations that we're having with you all and making sure we have community and board support. But it has, it has been communicated to us that we are accredited through spring of twenty twenty-four under NEASK. So that's what's been communicated to us and I don't, you know, I don't know that they would have an avenue to strip that in some way, yeah.
I would just echo what's been said, I'm fully, you know, you provided a lot of great material. I trust the decision that you're asking to make and, you know, typically I don't find a process works really well when people aren't excited and invested in it, so it's an awful lot of work to pursue something that you don't feel is right for the district, doesn't seem like a good use of time.
Go ahead Jim.
Yeah, what other schools have decided they're not going to pursue NEASK?
Right, so the three schools that I'm most familiar with who stepped away and again, almost a decade ago, are Portland High School, Deering High School and Casco Bay High School. And then I'm aware of a few others that, and I, I don't want to, a few others in Western Maine and Craig and I have talked about some and a few in Central Maine who have pumped the brakes on the process, haven't quite said that they want to pull away and work with somebody else, but because of the specific needs of their school, specific needs of their budgeting, have stepped away in recent years and halted the process. So we can, I think we can, yeah, did you want to add anything Craig?
Well, I read some newspaper articles and newspapers as a source can be, but I read several newspaper articles in the Globe about some Massachusetts, Boston suburbs pulling away from it and forming their own coalition. I believe there is something to that.
Yes, and then I was just thinking about Maine, but the Boston, it's my understanding that the Boston Public Schools in Boston proper have all pulled out and that's been for a number of years. And then some of the, sounds like some of the surrounding districts that are comparable to some of our neighbors as far as affluency and, you know, the goals of students and have also made a decision to band together and look elsewhere.
Go ahead Gary.
I'm totally inclined to let you folks research. The, the little bit of research I found online in the articles I was reading, because since the last meeting, I'm sure everybody's gone and looked and seen if they can find some anecdotal information. It seems that referring to NEASK as a goal standard is almost out of habit. At one time it was because it was the only, and now there are options and it's not so much the favored one anymore as much as it's a habitual one. I think there are a lot of, I get the impression that there are a lot of districts exploring options. Particularly around the, the comment that Craig made around the NEASK accreditation is rarely in line with your strategic plan for your own schools and your own, so you spend a lot of time matching your practice to what they want to find in their accreditation, when it may have little to nothing to do with what you're trying to accomplish as a district in the first place.
Right.
I would, I am totally in favor of looking elsewhere for another accreditation piece. I'm a little nervous about the college piece, I know there, I know it's like two out of sixteen said they want to see something, but they did say it was just something. And I think we can find something to satisfy that. I mean, we're already being accredited every five years by IB.
Right.
Which is, I find far more informational than NEASK has ever been.
And I think, I don't remember the exact language, but a lot of the, you know, the, some of the wording in that feedback from the schools that wanted to see something was about a standard of rigor.
Right.
And I think we pass that test every day because of IB and some other programming, but yeah, I think you make a good point.
Go ahead Misty.
What's the cost difference?
Sorry?
The cost difference?
I can't, I'm not sure, I can't speak to it. And part of the reason why I can't speak to it today, although it's definitely something we will get more information about, is that it's hard to put a number on the NEASK process because it depends on the cost of the two visits, how many visiting team members you have, where they need to stay, and then any other stipended work that we might need to ask people to do outside of their ordinary jobs. So again, I think the range for area schools has been between fifty and ninety thousand dollars in recent years for the whole process. And I will say things like great schools or quality school review usually have more of an, like an annual fee. It's not, again, we should get numbers, it's not astronomical, but because they do a lot of coaching of leadership teams and coaching of instructional leadership teams, it's more of an annual, kind of build it into the annual cost.
Go ahead Fran.
Of course, I haven't seen the report, I'm not familiar with it. The only question I have is, the, doesn't the state accredit the districts? So you get accreditation through the state or you have to go to a third source to get your accreditation? The school district does, I'm not quite, and I don't want to, you know, if it's not a question that you can answer now, that's fine. Because I don't have any background right now.
I mean, it's not my understanding that the Maine DOE does any accreditation of our public schools. They make strong recommendations about, for public high schools' graduation requirements and ensuring that every high school is meeting that standard, but I think all the accreditation bodies are third party entities, right?
Yeah, I mean historically, just not to belabor the point, historically, really before the internet and whatnot, where it was a little bit difficult to know one high school from another, colleges kind of banded together and looked for a third party accreditor to say, okay, you know, this person has a four point oh average at Grady Gloucester High School, but, you know, do they have a rigorous course of study or who are they? So you would bring in a third party, I think NEASK came in to fill that void when colleges started to get competitive. They were really the only gaming town and they were sort of, you know, had a monopoly on the service. And I think what we heard in the report last week is that there's now, people are stepping into the market to compete with NEASK. And I think this is the first time that we've had the opportunity to look at those competitors. And I think what you're, just to sum up the sentiment of the board, it seems to me is we don't object to picking our heads up and looking around. I think the cost has to be comparable or less. And I think, you know, we need to have some assurance that it will, you know, satisfy those schools that need satisfying in the same way that NEASK does. So, you know, for me, it seems like as long as we're not jeopardizing anybody's chance to go to a four year college and we're not spending any more money, if the administration thinks that there's a better way to, you know, go through the process of accreditation, it seems like we're all in favor of that. Does anybody object to that?
No.
I'm sorry, you hear something?
Yeah, go ahead Penny.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a point of clarity here about what, what we're actually being asked to do or what we need to do and if it's two parts. Because what I hear a lot of delicate maybe talk around is that the staff is doing a lot of work on this. So if we're saying, sure, sure, explore, we're open to that. Is it really two questions, one, do we have permission to stop with the NEASK work? And then an actual thoughtful decision needs to be made about accreditation?
I don't think that's what we're being asked to do yet.
That was going to be my motion actually, is that we decide to stop pursuing NEASK in lieu of these other organizations.
So that's a great question by Penny, right? So would you like, you're saying that like NEASK is dead to us? You know there's something better?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Okay, I think my suggestion would be, because the staff does get a pause on the process. We are not going to be taxing people over the summer with NEASK to do lists. And I think, again, I hope it's okay that I say this, but I think Sadie and I are still pursuing a formal petition to get an extension on the NEASK process. If that's approved, we'll probably hold that extension while we explore a more viable option. If we do not get the extension, looking at a more viable option will be front and center on the admin teams to do list this summer. And then we'll bring more information to the board over the summer as soon as we have more details and then we could make a firm, a firm commitment to step away.
Maybe our first September board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, would it be appropriate to ask that we have a formal recommendation on what to go with in our September board meeting?
From the administrative team?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be appropriate. I think we would want that team to be Craig, Chanda, Jade and Sadie.
Right, yeah, I mean however the administration wants to explore it, I think, you know, I don't think we want to say, you know, cut ties with NEASK, I mean, it's my opinion, I mean, we could talk it out in discussion on emotion, but I don't, I don't think we have to make that decision yet. And so why, you know, sort of decide to do something where we don't have quite all the data yet? I think I would like to hear a formal recommendation of how to handle accreditation at our September board meeting and then just take it from there rather than getting the reports along the way. Is there anybody who objects to that? Does that make sense to you Craig?
Yeah, I've been with this, I've gone through that process before, although it was eleven or twelve years ago. It's like your driver's license, you've got a full year left on it and so as far as NEASK is concerned, while they're doing their investigation and their research and coming back to the board a third time with a possible recommendation, if they fall behind in their preparation for the ten year visit, it's simply a matter of explaining to NEASK, we fell three months behind and reschedule whatever needs to be rescheduled.
Jason has your hand.
So my stance is always to try and keep as many options open as possible for as long as possible. So I would not be in support of stepping away from NEASK at this point, I think it's way too early. So what I've heard in the discussion here so far is no one objects to moving forward with researching NEASK. So I think that's really the feedback that we should be providing right now is just whether anyone objects to that and are we going to show our support for them to move forward with researching? And I personally am in support.
Okay, I think, does anybody object to that?
No, fine, my only pondered motion was just that that would facilitate your moving forward if you knew that we were, we were fine with just, you know, ending this relationship with NEASK.
And I, and I definitely appreciate that Jim, I think the staff would appreciate it, but I think Sadie and I will shoulder the limbo and make sure that we keep moving forward to some extent with the process so we don't jeopardize the school and we'll make it our charge to explore the other options. So, but I appreciate you saying that.
Okay, all right, I think we're good? Any further discussion? All right, thanks Jade, appreciate it. Thank you, audience member. Audience member, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we won't be offended. Committee reports, we have not had a committee meeting and we don't technically have committees yet, so I'm not going to worry about that part of the agenda. The school board's chair report, I don't have much, but we do have our quarterly joint leaders meeting coming up on tomorrow morning, I guess it is actually. And this is an informal gathering between the chairs of New Gloucester, Gray, our school board and Craig and the two town managers, where we just meet quarterly to see if there's anything that we're planning that will affect the other or if there's opportunities for collaboration. Right now, the two things on the agenda are, we are going to just finally, 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 iron out the Libby Hills Trails agreement, which we've all signed, but I guess we still need to talk about for some reason, just beyond me. And the other thing is there is some discussion about us sharing the costs of a GPS driven sports field line chalking robot. So we would, there's some thought that we could all use a robot that draws the chalk lines on sports fields. Apparently this is a thing, I know nothing about it, but I will report back tomorrow. Is there anything, I know I'm springing this on you, but if you want to shoot me an email before tomorrow morning as well, if there's anything that is a burning topic of discussion that you would want to raise with the towns, feel free to let me know or if you have something that just sprung to mind, anybody have anything? They're usually just mostly information sharing. We always do one in the spring to let people know what our budgets are looking like and that kind of thing, just so that it's not a total surprise when we finish up the process and, you know. In general, people tend to have something suddenly come up and the meetings aren't that well attended always, but, you know, we'll see what happens. And otherwise, I want to share Jade's sentiments that, you know, she expressed earlier, which is just thanking everybody throughout MSAD fifteen for their support for our school budget. Empowers us to continue with our strategic plan and continue with our mission of preparing kids for the next step, whatever that next step happens to be. I know and we knew that it was a more significant ask than we've asked in the past and so we really appreciate the support you showed us. And also it's support for just all the work that the administrators do in really examining every line item and coming to all those workshops that we have during the spring. And it's just a reminder, if you happen to be watching out there in TV land or watching or recording this in the future, please look for budget workshop events. They start generally in February and we would love more public participation so that it's less of a surprise when we come to the end. The more people that come to our budget workshops, the better and we absolutely encourage and appreciate feedback after each one of those workshops. So just putting in a plug, look for that budget process next year because we really do spend a lot of time on it and sometimes it can be frustrating for the school board where like two days before the vote, people start asking us, hey, what's your budget look like? Well, we've been talking about it for six months, so, you know, if it's something that's important to you, please do participate in the process. Okay, moving into the superintendent's report, do you want to start with just the quick answer on that question about the absenteeism?
Sure, I have actually something else that just came in.
Yeah, what you got?
I got a letter from the commissioner of education. Maine Department of Education has five paid summer internships. It's open to any Maine student in their second or third year of college. And every year I see this memo and every year I'm a little annoyed because it tends to go to kids who just happen to go to Ivy League schools or those types of schools. This year, we have a young man named Joseph Koenig, who is a two thousand twenty-one graduate of Grady Gloucester High School and a student at Hustin University, who is now one of the paid summer interns at the Maine Department of Education. He's majoring in marketing communications with a minor in integrated technology and certificates in photography and graphic design. This summer, Mr. Koenig will be working as the school and student supports communication assistant in the commissioner's office where he will be doing outreach to Maine educators, parents and community members about various educational opportunities. And so this is And so this is, this is an impressive accomplishment for this young man and a feather in the cap of a lot of people, I think.
Great news.
Yes.
Congratulations to Joseph Koenig.
And then to Ms. Monroe's question, so we've had, this has been something we've been working on for a long time. Before the pandemic, the Maine Department of Education was supporting an initiative called Count Me In. And it was designed to address students who are chronically absent. Not truants, truants are sort of their own little thing, those are, they're totally averse to going to school and they simply don't come to school at all. But the chronically absent is the students who miss 10% of all school days. And so what happens is when they're missing only 10%, it's easy for, seemingly it doesn't look like they're missing a lot of school, but they are missing a lot of school. If you're missing 10% of your instruction during your school year, that means you're missing 18 days, which means you're missing about 108 hours of instruction. And so we worked on that program and we saw really good results. A lot of, a large decrease in chronic absenteeism over a two-year period. Then the pandemic came and we sent kids home. And the first year, they went to school every other day for social distancing. And the second year, they came masked, still social distance. And we told them, stay home, if you're sick, stay home, if you don't feel well, stay home. If you suspect you might be sick, stay home. So we spent two years telling kids and parents, if you so much as sneeze, stay home. And so what's happened now, we've trained kids for two years to make them feel as though it's easy to miss school. And this is happening in a lot of workplaces, it's happening in a lot of the schools. And so in February of this year, I talked about it in the community newsletter and I emailed that back to you. Lauren and Ms. Monroe, I sent it to your private email account, because you don't have a district account yet. And I don't even have your private account, but I can send it to you.
Well, if it's the report that went out to parents, I got it.
Oh, you got it, great. So this talks about the whole concept of chronic absenteeism and how we can get more students to school. And one of the things, when I looked in the research and I talked about this, and it was actually a question during the town council forum that they had on the candidates, is looking at this from a community standpoint. How do we as a community encourage our kids to be at school? One of the things that you'll notice in the local teen employers, people like McDonald's or Hannaford, they expect kids to be in school, they expect those teens to be in school. And as a matter of fact, a lot of those companies, the companies that employ our teens, if they have midterm exams or if they have a big event at school, they'll work around them to make their schedule. So I think there's, what has to happen is a lot of education has to be around getting the kids to cool, coming to school. And I think one of the things that we inadvertently trained our kids to do during the COVID period was, school is about doing work, get your work done. I'll talk to you during Zoom instruction and then you go do work on your own. And I think that, that that's not quite good enough. You need the teaching and learning, you need the interaction with the teacher, you need the interaction with your peers. And so this is what we're, we're working toward. And so I'll give you a chance to reread this on your own, to talk about it on your own. It is one of our initiatives from the Tier Two work that we got from the Maine Department of Education and we will be reporting out to the full board with a formal report on the progress we've made, either in September or October.
May I ask a question? So basically, it's, the absenteeism has to do with illness and, or that they don't feel well, is that what you're saying?
Well, there's five reasons that you can be absent, according to Maine DOE, family crisis, illness, school dismissal for a school event. But what's happening is the gatekeeping about kids going to school. I think we've inadvertently, and when I say we, maybe families, schools themselves during the pandemic, have made missing school less of a big deal than it has been in the past. And so, so if you think about it, if you were 13 when the epidemic came and then for two years, your school was saying, look, don't take any risk if you're at all not feeling well, stay home. So for two years of a 13-year-old, we've imprinted in them that it's kind of okay to stay home. So that's kind of the, what we're trying to
reverse.
Yeah, and
It's not like we did that lightly. We were addressing a global pandemic that we didn't understand necessarily and there's still pretty good reason not to come to school if you feel sick, to be clear. I think what we need to do is understand exactly what is driving our chronic absenteeism and create a plan to address it. All right, continue with your superintendent's report.
Resignations, Jennifer Stowe, school psychologist, and Stephanie Inare, science teacher at the Biddle School. And that's it. We will probably have some new hires for you to consider at the July meeting.
All right, thank you, Craig. Maggie, you have everything you need? All right, then I would hear a motion to go into executive session.
I move to enter into executive session regarding the evaluation of the superintendent as per 1 MRSA 4056A.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on that?
Yes.
I would also like to invite
Oh, we gotta invite Craig again?
Yeah.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? All right, we'll give Maggie a couple minutes to scoot. Just as a reminder to our new members, when we are in executive session, which we are right now, we really need to refrain from talking
He sees us. Wait for the on-air to come on, okay? Can I hear motion adjourned?
Motion.
To adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.
I'll do one shot.